Chris?
Present.
Marcus?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith. Mayor Chairman Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight is by Father Leo Deschamps. Did I pronounce that right? Is he here?
I don't see him.
I don't think he's here yet, sir.
Do we move to excuse Ron Smith? Mayor Ron Smith?
Let's do it after the pledge.
Okay.
I mean, after the presentation.
Okay.
Start, okay. Okay, do you want to do the pledge allegiance, sir? Thank you.
Buddy, please rise, face our flag and white flag over card and, yeah.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with no reason, justice, or all.
Okay. There's Todd Davis here. Come on up, Todd. Congratulations. Todd graduated this last May, June, from Periclee High School. He was the member of the varsity football team. In 2008, 2009, Todd was named All-State Defensive Team and named as Defensive Player of the Year by the AV Press. Whereas in 2007, 2008, 2009, Todd was named to the All-Olympic League Defensive Team and was named to the CIF Mid Valley Defensive Team. Todd was also a member of the 2008 CIF Mid Valley Division Championship Team. He has maintained a 3.2 GPA, cumulative GPA throughout his high school career. He's on the principal list of honors, dean's list honors, the National Honor Society and the honors program for math. Todd will be attending Cal State University at Sacramento this fall. And on behalf of the Lancaster City Council, I'd like to commend you and award you this for being the athlete of the month. What? Oh, are his parents here? Come on down. Here, you can hold that. Good. Why don't we go over here and we'll do a better picture. How are you? How are you? Now, the good news is you get a $1,000 scholarship if you're allowed to take it. There's some kind of rules, so if you can, you get it. Okay? Great. Thank you. Have we ever figured out, did they get to take it, or have you figured out a way to do it?
There are some NCA regulations that we have to go through, and it has to do with whether it's academic or athletic, and we'll work with that. It really is the compliance officer at Sac State that will do it.
Okay, I don't want to read, you know, where I was responsible for Sac State losing their eligibility. Okay?
Yes, sir.
We have a presentation from Los Angeles County on the MAC facility. I would introduce you, but they didn't tell me who you are.
That's fine, I'll introduce myself. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is an update from LA County. I am Scott Mackey. I am a project manager with Lee Burkhart Lou Architects. I am, our office is in Marina Del Rey. We've been working with the county on this project since April of this year. It's a very fast-track project, but this project has been discussed and in planning for a long time, so everybody is anxious to see this come to fruition. So I do have a brief presentation this evening to get you updated as to what the status of the project is and where we are. The project is a, is a brand-new clinic. It's a multi-service ambulatory care facility. It is not a hospital, there are no overnight patients. It is an outpatient clinic that also has outpatient surgery components to it. There are three buildings proposed as part of this development. The primary building is a clinic building. The secondary buildings are more support functions. I'll speak to those in just a moment. The total building area is 142,000 square feet. Part of the development include all onsite infrastructure, including landscaping, parking, signage, site utilities and whatnot. There's also included some offsite improvements as negotiated with the city, which includes additional perimeter landscaping on the property, the raised street mediums in East Avenue I, turn lanes and a new bus stop. There is sustainable design included in this to meet the county standard for LEED Silver rating. This is a equivalency standard to make sure that the building is efficient, is recognized with renewable resources, using recycled materials. It's basically green building practices is what we're following on this. The project will also include a civic art component, and I notice that in and around Lancaster, art is a very big component. I love what's going on downtown. There's a million dollars allocated for civic art in this project. Some of our design goals on this project are in recognition of the climatic conditions here in Lancaster, very unique, very particular. We have extreme highs and lows, the wind conditions and whatnot. So our, our approach to this is very timeless design. We want to utilize very durable materials that will stand the test of time here. Again, the LEED Silver Certification is a minimum standard. Currently, I do want to say that we have exceeded that, but again, at this point in time, this is a design effort that is still in process. So the ultimate goal will be no less than Silver. We will utilize drought-tolerant landscaping as part of the, part of the project. The intent is a very safe and secure facility, as well as minimize the impact to the neighborhood. We're cognizant of traffic noise, impact of various activities as a result of this clinic. So we do have located the facility so that it's easily accessible, both by the public and by the staff, so it's, it's fairly clean and its impact to the flow of traffic in and around East Avenue I. We do want to see that this design enhances the community. We feel that this is going to be a very proud building, a building that will be a significant statement to this community, and we want to recognize that, that in this location, that it should be prominently positioned. The site itself is the intersection of East Avenue I and Third Street East. On this image, there are two parcels, parcel A, which is approximately 15 acres, which is the main clinic site, and parcel B, which is an option that the county is considering is for future development. The vacant site is currently owned by the Lancaster Redevelopment Agency, and the county is pursuing that option to purchase with the LRA at a point in the future. The site development itself, as I said, is three buildings. The main clinic building being at the southwest corner of Third Street and East Avenue I. We located the building here in this location to primarily announce its presence to the community, so that it's easily seen, that it's easily accessed from this location, but also to pull it away from the neighborhoods, the homes that are in the northern area, so that we minimize the impact to them. We do bring the traffic into the site, the parking into the site, and process it through the internal area within the property itself. So the additional two buildings, as I said, are support buildings. They consist of materials management support, central plant, and the third building is a crafts building, which is a maintenance facility that, that the county utilizes to do repairs and upgrades to all of their facilities in the area. Again, the building located prominently on the corner allows for access immediately off of East Avenue I, which is where all the public will enter the site. The main building entrance is to the east. We've located it in this direction to protect it from, from winds and other harsh conditions. The western sun gets really intense here, so we're trying to protect all the entrance from that area. We, we bring the, the traffic onto the site and enter the building into a main two-and-a-half story atrium space, which is kind of like an interior, interior space, a mall or an interior street kind of space. The support components being to the north of that are where the staff enters, but the main public entrance is, is to the east. This is a view of the primary entrance. This is the east elevation for the most part. There is some south elevation, which is what the, the elevation along East Avenue I would look like. But we are preparing drop-offs, and you can see that there's a large atrium space in that middle component. On the south side of the building are primarily the administrative functions. On the north side are the clinic functions. The landscaping we propose to be rich, but appropriate for the environment, so it will be native drought-tolerant plant species. We do, are collecting the people from the parking areas on horizontal connector elements that we hope to surface with photovoltaics. We're taking advantage of the climate and the opportunity to utilize renewable resources. And we do have more organic central spine, which will have large sycamore types, type trees. But again, this is all a very drought-tolerant and water-efficient site. Current project status is we are in the process of preparing the final scoping bridging documents. And what that means is that a scoping bridging document is a set of documents that is issued to a design-build entity, a separate group of people that will take the criteria for this project, put together the final construction documents, get the necessary permits for construction approvals, and do the completed construction. So it is a complete design-build team which will complete out the entire project. The project has been submitted to the city for their review and their comments. It's currently under that review. The county is in the process of completing their environmental impact report, and that is due to be completed sometime early next year. It is being circulated for public review in the next few months. The county is, in, as part of this project, vacating public roads and abandoning and relocating the existing utilities within the, within the project site. And then following the EIR, the county anticipates to exercise the option to purchase that initial option, or parcel A, as, as part of their purchase option. So again, it's a design-build implementation process. The schedule for the project is where the county is, is hoping to issue a request for proposals from those design-build entities by the fall of 2010, to award that contract by the summer of next year, 2011, and then complete construction by the winter of 2014. The total construction budget for the project is $90 million, and it is currently within that budget level based on our recent cost estimate. The overall project budget is $120 million, and the project funding is initially with commercial paper, but ultimately will, will be funded via the Build America Bonds through the American Reinvestment and Recovery Act. So I just want to say that the project is moving along very well, right on schedule, and I, it's, it's going to be a, a true opportunity for the city of Lancaster to really have new facilities that they've been, that the county has provided health services for in a number of years, and, and probably substandard facilities. This will be state-of-the-art. It will really be a, a facility that the city can be proud of. I know the county will be proud of it. We've had lots of compliments on it from, from the county staff, and, and the users at the facility have been very supportive of the whole process, and we're really anxious to get this project completed and move it on to this next stage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, hold on.
Go ahead.
Any questions?
Wish you could get started faster.
I, I noticed that there wasn't any solar panels in the pictures. Is there a reason for that?
Those are early development stages. We will, as we get further into the refinement of the finishes and the details, we do have photovoltaics. We also anticipate having some wind turbine components as well, so they are coming along.
When, when do you expect to break ground?
Late next year.
I'm sorry?
So that would be winter of 2011.
And how long to completion?
Through winter of 2014, so approximately three-year completion.
Three years before you see patients?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This, this has been a project from Mike Antonovich that is going to significantly impact our, our mortality rate. You know, most of you know we have an incredibly high mortality rate from numerous preventable diseases and, and treatable diseases, and its supervisor, Antonovich, is essentially this is his project that he has, he has shepherded through, and he's going to save hundreds, if not thousands, of lives once this gets, gets up and running. So we can hardly wait. Okay, thank you.
I just had one question about the, the art component. Would, would we get a gander at that before? It's, would we have any say-so whatsoever, or?
Part of our deal is, is that we go over the designs and such, so I'm sure that they would be more than happy to review and work with us on that. You're talking about the public art component?
Right. The art component will be mostly inside and in the parking lot, and we will have a committee to select the art component. The committee will have the SC five. My name is Mike Patel, and I'm a project manager from Department of Public Works overseeing this project. The art component is, it will be handled by our art commission, and the art commission will form a committee to select that one, and committee will have five members, and as we go along, we will share all of our findings with, with the city.
Would the, would the committee be comprised of any citizens of Lancaster?
We will look into that one, and, and if it, if possible, we will do that, yes.
Okay. The other question I had is that the parking lot, that was a, quite a parking lot, and my thoughts were with some of the events that are going to go on downtown Lancaster, is, is that a possibility when, when the hospital is, is, you know, the down hours? Usually it's going to be in the evenings. I'm just thinking, is there any possibility that the city could utilize the parking lot and maybe shuttle people downtown, or is that, is that a possibility?
This is Scott Mackey. To clarify, the operating hours of the facility are from 8:00 AM until midnight, so it, it's quite lengthy. There may not be any opportunities for that. Obviously, during the evening hours, it's less demand, so there could possibly be an opportunity, but it is, it is a very busy site, and there's a lot of patient traffic in and out. The urgent care is open until midnight, as well as the imaging components and whatnot, so it, it could be necessarily a, a difficult thing to coordinate. There are conference rooms in the facility as well that could also be open to public opportunities, so they won't be scheduled full-time. So in the evening, they could be used for other functions, as long as those functions, the conference rooms are 50 to 100 people or something like that. So it, it's not, it's not a great extent, but, so it's, it's a very busy complex, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
So there may be some, may be some opportunity, but it may be limited.
Well, one of your components in your presentation was that, of course, you're, you're want to make safety one of the top efforts, and I'm just wondering, you know, in that area, we just want to make sure that, that our citizens are safe.
Correct. And I think a lot of that has to do with adequate site lighting, adequate barriers, protection elements. Obviously, we've identified parking controls for staff. Obviously, after hours, there's a concern about people accessing back and forth to the parking lots, you know, in darker parts of the site, and trying to maintain that with, within keeping of lighting standards that need to be maintained as well. So it's a fine balance, but that is one of the things that we're trying to do, which is why we're trying to create a buffer also to the north, so that there isn't migration back and forth into the neighborhood from this facility, so.
Okay. My, like I said, one of my concerns is the safety, and, and quite often, when there's a, a county facility or a county building going up, it's the county that's so far away from the Antelope Valley, that we just want to make sure that, that you guys really take Lancaster in consideration in everything that you do with the building.
Absolutely. And we've met with, with city traffic, make sure that there's no traffic flow issues in terms of safety also, and crossing streets and things like that. Sheriff is full-time on-site. There's, there are significant amount of security measures on-site, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much.
And now we have somebody from the Los Angeles Housing Authority, Los Angeles County Housing Authority. I, I bet you're coming to tell us you're going to remove half the Section 8, is that?
No, not tonight. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Dorian Jenkins. I'm the Deputy Executive Director for the Community Development Commission. I specifically oversee the Housing Authority and all operations for the Housing Authority, both the public housing and Section 8. And we wanted to give you a brief update on where we are with our program as of our fiscal year ending 2010, June 2010. So where we are currently, we are 100% utilizing our program, which means we're 100% leased. Thus, we have closed our waiting list, and we're not processing any new applications at this time. Anyone on our waiting list will have to wait until there's more availability, but at this time, our waiting list is closed, and we're not processing any additional applications. We've completed 100% of our annual recertifications of clients' income eligibility within HUD regulations. We completed 100% of our annual inspections within HUD regulations. In fact, we're po, we're poised to get the second, or the highest score for the second year in a row as far as managing the Section 8 program for the, in the Los Angeles County. We submit our scores and our score, our scores to HUD for our scorecard at the end of August, and we are very excited as we anticipate receiving such high marks for the second consecutive year. To address the growing need of customer service in Antelope Valley, we expanded our operations in Antelope Valley. What that means is we hired additional staff to provide better service. We brought on eight more case managers in our, in our Antelope Valley office. We hired a new manager who comes to us with several years of experience in running the Section 8 program. Her name is Tracy Mann. She's actually in the audience right here. She's going to be taking up the operations in our Antelope Valley office to hopefully better service the community. So if there's any questions or concerns, we have a point of contact right here for you to go to directly. In addition, we've continued to improve the training of our staff. We've developed and implemented a training plan to better train our staffs to operate the program within the regulations and to be a better part of, part of the Antelope Valley community. So we expect, and, well, I expect our team to be more involved with everything, with the community in regards to the Section 8 program. We want to hear from you. We want to incorporate any changes we can to better serve you in, in operating the program. And thus this, we want to take today as an opportunity to give you an update on where we are currently, whereas of the end of our fiscal year. So that pretty much ends my brief update on where we are with our Section 8 program in the Antelope Valley, and I would entertain any questions you may have.
How many recipients do we have in Lancaster?
Well, over the last three months, we've seen a, a negative trend, actually. The Lancaster numbers have decreased by 30. Currently, you have 2,250 active contracts.
Is that in Lancaster or?
Lancaster alone.
What's the Antelope Valley?
The Antelope Valley is a little more than 3,700, with the actual total is 3,782. 3,782.
What is the population, as far as the percentage of the population that receives it here in the Antelope Valley as compared to the LA basin?
17% of our clients are in the Antelope Valley. Well, let me correct myself. Specifically, 17% are in Lancaster.
17% of all of Los Angeles County's Section 8 recipients reside in Lancaster?
Currently, well, as of our June report, yes, sir.
Doesn't, doesn't that seem out of balance to you?
Actually, sir, it reflects to me supply and demand. One of the major tenants of this federally-funded program is choice. When they developed the program, it's, they called it Housing Choice Voucher, which gives the clients the choice to move anywhere in the continental United States. So to answer your question, the clients go where there's a supply of housing.
Does that mean, does that mean the Housing Authority just chooses to ignore all of the science that we, we have at our disposal that says if you populate a neighborhood with over 30% rental, that the crime rates of those neighborhoods will increase, that the quality of living in those neighborhoods will diminish? That, that is absolutely robust science. If it gets to 50%, the neighborhood starts to become unlivable, and you're telling me that, that you ignore that?
No, sir. I'm saying the Housing Authority, which runs the program under HUD's regulations, has no authority to, to prevent a client from moving in any jurisdiction. Federal Fair Housing Laws and HUD restrictions, which do not allow us to direct, steer, or prevent a client from moving anywhere in the continent of the United States in which they choose. We cannot do any, we cannot prevent a client from moving anywhere they want to.
Where are your, your Section 8 offices at?
Our offices, our corporate offices in Monterey Park, and our Section 8 main office is in Santa Fe Springs.
Any other offices?
We have an office in Antelope Valley, and we have a satellite office in West Hollywood.
So do you think that possibly having satellite offices in West Hollywood and another one in Antelope Valley might steer people into those areas when they're exercising their choice of housing on the Section 8 program? Do you think that might have something to do with how those people end up with a 17% in Lancaster, which anybody, anybody would have to recognize as an imbalance in the county? So if you're really not steering them here, why don't you have an office in Beverly Hills? Why don't you have an office in Sino? Why don't you have an office in upper-income areas? The reason you don't have offices there is because you don't want them living there. You want them living in Lancaster. Isn't that true?
That's incorrect, sir. Those cities that you mentioned, those cities that you mentioned are governed by the City of Los Angeles Housing Authority. We do not have jurisdiction in those areas. We, based on, based on the need for service, that's where we direct our resources. There was a need for service, which we were requested to provide better service for the citizens in the community of Lancaster, so we expanded the operations. Wherever, based on supply and demand, if the clients are in, for instance, to use your example, Beverly Hills, the City of Los Angeles, who governs that area, would open an office to service it. It actually, the City of Los Angeles has an office that governs its valley operations and its city operations based on the supply and demand. The cities of, there are Phoenix, Arizona, Scottsdale, Denver, which I just returned from a conference. This is a national program, sir, and all agencies have the same, follow the same process. When the clients select the area in which they want to reside, we provide the resources and that service to better community, better service to that community.
So how do I get to get Lancaster to be part of the LA City Housing Authority?
How do you get that? Well, that is a question I can't answer, sir.
We are very unhappy with the imbalance that exists in this county, and we are extremely unhappy with the, with your, your department, the people you work for, with you, and not correcting that imbalance. And what you tell us is that you have no intention of correcting it. Isn't that right?
No. What I'm saying is I work for the Housing Authority, well, the Community Development Commission, and the Housing Authority is funded by HUD, and we are working within the regulations and that HUD sets for the program. And based on the regulations, we're performing at a high level, and we cannot prevent clients from moving in any jurisdiction. And to your point, for the city, if you were to figure out a way with HUD to allow this program to be in the city, that would expand the city's program to over 60,000 to 70,000 voucher holders, and they would have the same concern, because the majority of the contracts moving to the Valley at this time are coming from the City of LA Housing Authority, not from the county of Los Angeles, because clients have the option to move where they choose. The City of LA's clients are moving to the Antelope Valley at a higher rate than our existing clients in the county.
You know, I was, I was born on Lancaster Boulevard. I am probably an expert in what the City of Lancaster has to offer people. the City of Lancaster has to offer people. You know, there has to be something that is causing them to exercise choice in Lancaster. And what I suspect it is, is they're getting more bang for their buck because you're not pricing the rents accordingly to what they should be priced at. Isn't that right?
I would agree that they get.
How could you say it is not steering people into Lancaster if the system that you create steers them this way?
Well, the system that HUD and Congress has created requires us to do rent reasonability tests on the units that we lease. The units that we lease in Lancaster rent for a far less rent than in the City of Los Angeles. Thus, yes, you can get more for your money because the rents here are dramatically lower. The Housing Authority, along with the landlords who own the properties, set the rents. The Housing Authority does not own the properties in which the tenants reside. There has to be landlords willing to rent to residents for that price.
Well, how do you set the amount of the voucher?
The voucher is set based on the fair market rents, which are set by HUD. HUD sets the fair market rents each October, and within that range, we have the opportunity to set our voucher payment standards within 90% or 110% of the fair market rent. We have set ours at the absolute lowest. Our rents are the lowest that HUD would allow us to set.
Wait a minute, is it the lowest for LA County, or is it the lowest for Lancaster?
It's the lowest for the fair market rents as set for HUD for our area.
What is our area?
Area is Los Angeles County.
So you know that systemically, systemically, the system guarantees that Lancaster is going to have a disproportionate number of renters in their community. And I want to be really clear on this. It doesn't matter to me if they're Section 8 or if they're anybody else. I know that once neighborhoods get a certain level of renters versus homeowners, crime goes up, the quality of life goes down. The reason I know that is everybody involved in urban planning knows that. Isn't that true?
Well, sir, I can't say yes or no to that because I haven't seen the facts or the statistics. I can say anecdotally what I think, but that would be my personal opinion without looking at statistics. What I can say as far as this program goes, that we cannot prevent clients from moving in any area. It's a federally funded program, sir.
So is what you're telling us, there is nothing the LA County Housing Authority can do about addressing the imbalance about how the vouchers are, the amount of the voucher is calculated, which enables or guarantees that people will be moving to Lancaster because they're setting the voucher for a high rate of rent down in Los Angeles or the area around the city of Los Angeles. The rents are much higher. And so you know that because our rents are lower, these people will be moving here. Isn't that right?
Well, actually, to your, actually, that's incorrect. Because we do have the right to set our voucher payment standards to the lower range of the FMR. By us setting the rates lowest possible at 90%, that means our clients have to pay more out of their pocket and the subsidy is less. The higher you set within that fair market rate range, the higher subsidy from the government. So what we've done is cause our clients to pay a higher portion of rent out of their pocket. So the Housing Authority has taken steps to make it less desirable to move in this area because the clients have more out-of-pocket expense.
But the fair market value you're setting that on, the basis you're using for that, which is fair market value, is out of proportion. It's out of balance, isn't it?
Well, actually, on that point, I would agree with you. We've actually argued with HUD because the fair market rents, excuse me, I don't want to use jargon, were increased last year by 5% for our area, and we petitioned HUD to say that was incorrect. Based on what we've seen, the fair market rent should have gone down. But the federal government sets these rates. We argued because we felt that 5% increase was not warranted. However, those rates were set. So we used our flexibility to provide the lowest amount of subsidy possible within HUD regulations.
What I'm asking you, is there anything, are you telling us that it is beyond your authority, beyond your ability to set the fair market value for Lancaster or for the Antelope Valley independent of what it is in the downtown area?
Correct. We cannot set our own fair market rents. However, within that range, we can choose the amount of subsidy that we can provide our clients by setting our voucher payment standards. We do not have the option for this program, which again, as I repeated, is federally funded, to make that particular change.
By using the lower figure, does that mean you have more recipients?
No. Well, that means we are paying lower subsidy on their behalf.
But as a result, do you have more money, which results in more recipients?
Well, we were maxed out, we maximized our lease up before we lowered our voucher payment standard. Our lease up was a byproduct of the growing need based on the economy. We had over 180,000 people on our waiting list. The economy dictated that we utilize all the vouchers that HUD allocated to us. So that was why we in turn earned more admin fee because we were able to, we leased all of the units to assist as many needy families as possible. When you, you would agree that based on current economy, there's a great need to help a population of people who are deserving, who deserves assistance. And what we did was maximize our ability to help those people.
I don't have any complaint with helping people who need help. I have serious complaints of reading about people who have been on the Section 8 program for decades and living in four and five-bedroom new homes, paying $75 a month, and running rackets out of the house. I have serious problems with that, and I think everybody in this area does. Are you doing anything, are you doing, wait a minute, are you doing anything to address the imbalance of the fair market value that you're setting these vouchers at? Anything at all?
Again, as I think I previously stated, that's beyond our control. However, we are equally as concerned about clients who do not comply with program requirements, who do not, who do not comply with the laws of the city, the state, and the land. Just as a non-Section 8 tenant, the police are concerned with those citizens complying with the law. We are extremely concerned. To that end, we continue to fully fund an investigations unit that's not funded by HUD. HUD does not fund us to investigate program compliance. However, we continue to do so. Most agencies, over 90%, do not fund the compliance unit. However, we do, because we are concerned with the integrity of the program, the integrity of how we spend hard-earned taxpayer dollars. So we continue to investigate all allegations of program compliance, all allegations of crime, and where it's proven, we terminate assistance immediately. In fact, in the Antelope Valley area, we've opened over 196 cases last year for investigation for alleged program violations. And as they were confirmed, we terminated from the program 48 cases, and we still have 85 cases open, which we're actively investigating.
Is it a fair statement that Lancaster terminates more Section 8 vouchers than any place else in the nation, as far as you know?
No, that would be an incorrect statement. As I said, I-
Who terminates more?
It just came from a national, two national conferences, one in DC, one in Denver. And the running kind of a joke is, it's Chicago, New Orleans, and also Houston that has high termination rates because of program violation.
So how come we're not matching them?
How come we're not, because of our, probably because of our great program compliance unit investigating allegations and all the upfront work that we do. We do a lot of upfront work with our clients, instructing them on what they need to do once they become, come onto the program. This is a valuable asset. This is a valuable resource to help you. However, if you do not comply with the rules, we will terminate your assistance. And we talk about this during the screening process. We discuss it during the annual recertification process. When our inspectors visit their home, visit their homes, we discuss it. If you do not want to lose your assistance, we need you to comply with the rules.
Thank you. I think Sherry has some things she wants to ask you.
Excuse me?
Well, basically, Mayor Paris, what I wanted to do was say that we have, I call it a square dance. We've been square dancing for two years with CDC, and we get nowhere. They, what they tell us is that there's nothing they can do. They're going by the program, which is a federally-run program, and there's absolutely nothing that they can do for the City of Lancaster to go out of their way to try and help us with the abundant Section 8 that we have. And we don't have the monies to go forward to help us with the program and enforcing the program. And I will just say, during this square dance, it seems like they give a little bit, and then they go around the backside and take a little bit. And actually, Mr. Dorico might be able to nutshell it for us even more eloquently than I can. But the one thing that I will tell you, Mr. Jenkins, that I'm really concerned about, is that you do mention that we're 100% leased.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You mentioned that the waiting list is closed.
Yes.
Okay. But that doesn't mean if somebody wants to come to Lancaster to live with a voucher, that they, they can't move here, right?
Correct.
That means they can, they can come.
They have that choice.
Right.
However, if they move to Lancaster, they would get a lower amount of subsidy. We've set our subsidy the lowest possible within the HUD regulations. So they know there would be a higher out-of-pocket expense for those clients.
Okay. Well, one of my concerns has been and is, the people that port in from different places other than the citizens of Lancaster that need Section 8 are not getting Section 8 first. The portings are getting them. So what, what can you explain about that? And then I would like to have Mr. Dorico just kind of nutshell.
Well, it's, my explanation is first.
Don't you love to be called on in speech without any warning?
Did you want Mr. Dorico to respond?
Well, I wanted to hear about the portings.
From a first or a second point of view, priority, clients who port in are already on the Section 8 program. And being on the program gives you the choice to move anywhere in the United States. Clients, I mean applicants who may be living in the Lancaster area who are not current participants have to wait until the waiting list is open or until we're able to process applications again. So as long as, if you're on the program and you live in Lancaster and you choose to move to a different location, you can. If you're on the program and you live in Phoenix and you choose to move, you can, because you have that right once you're on the program.
Okay, so yet again, when Lancaster asks you, some of our citizens, some of our elderly and disabled and people that are in need cannot get a Section 8 voucher, but someone else porting in, in other words, you're not going to help us out here. There's nothing you can do. Your hands are tied, right? You can't help us get those people that are in Lancaster that need a voucher to live in Lancaster, but you, you would allow someone to port in?
Someone to port in is already on the program, ma'am.
Right.
And in order to get on the program, you have to be on the waiting list and go through the screening process.
Doesn't matter if you're ported in from Maine or Kentucky or anywhere else, but because someone who lives here in Lancaster that needs Section 8 housing, they're waiting on a list.
Correct.
They're not going to get served first.
They will not be served until we, because we're, as we stated, we are 100% utilized. Until such time as our attrition, families become self-sufficient and come off the program, that's when we can start processing new applications.
Could you provide me sometime in the next two weeks, the ordinance that specifically governs how the fair market value is set?
Sure.
I'm sorry, my microphone's not on. Talking into it for no reason at all.
I understood.
I would like the ordinance that you're citing when you say you don't have any options. And I'd like any relevant research Housing Authority has done on that issue of doing the fair market value by ZIP codes or some other more equitable arrangement.
I can provide you that within two weeks because we've actually done, we have just completed recently a reasonability study in the area to determine if our rents were equitable. It's composed to non-assisted units. And we looked at our rents as compared to our voucher payment standard and compared to the city of Los, to the contracts in the County of Los Angeles. And our rents are considerably lower here, considerably lower. Our average rents here are lower than our voucher payment standard, much lower than the fair market rent, and much lower than the rents in the-
And what I want to know is why you can't do something about that? What you're relying on to not be able to do anything about that?
It's a combination of things. It's the owners in the area for assisted and non-assisted units help set the market.
That's not what I, that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is when you use your baseline of what fair market values are, you're setting it county-wide. I want to know why you have to do it that way instead of by ZIP code or something that's more equitable and fair. Okay?
Could do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, may I add, correct two things?
Yes.
If it would. Thank you. One, I want to say that we pay a significant portion for those inspectors out of the city's general fund. The other thing is, it sort of comes as a surprise to me, maybe I didn't understand it, but my understanding was, in meetings I've attended, that we do use a look at local rents to set, to set the thing. And I don't know if that's what you were asking or not.
What he's telling me is they don't.
No.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm hearing too. But so that's pretty upsetting to us because we've been in several meetings where we're told that they specifically look at market rents in the Antelope Valley or Kern County.
Maybe it's terminology. I'm using HUD terminology, so let me see if I can clarify. HUD sets fair market rents throughout the nation for different areas. When we go out and determine contract rents for Lancaster or Palmdale or South Gate, we come in the area, we do a reasonability study of the rents in that area as compared to our voucher payment standard and what the owner is requesting and what the rents-
You know, I'm a lawyer, and I'm having trouble understanding it.
I know. It's a complicated, it's not a simple formula because it takes a lot of pieces to come to that final resolution of what the rents are. And Mr. Dorico is aware of this, that it's not one set of criteria that we have to use. So we do look at the rents in the area, sir. We look at unassisted rents, that means private landlords not on the program. We look at assisted rents, and we look at what the owner is asking before we set the rent for that specific contract. Every time we contract a unit in anywhere, we look at those factors before we determine what that rent is going to be.
And because I hate to, I hate to bring up sensitive subjects that make people, you know, squirm in their seat. I just hate doing that. Let me ask you this.
Sure.
Why is it that over 70% of your recipients are African-Americans when your population base is probably a third African-American, a third Hispanic, and a third white?
No, I don't know. I know what I want, how I want to answer the question.
HUD sent me a letter, HUD sent me a letter threatening, HUD sent me a letter threatening to sue me citing those stats.
Yes, I want to answer the question the right way, not the way I feel I should answer the question. The program is based on first serve, first come, first served, and income. When the applicant, when the waiting list is open, everyone is open to apply for the program. It's based on date and time of application, not on ethnic background. And when we determine who's going to come onto the program, it's not based on ethnic background. It's based on your income and eligibility at that time. We do not look at the ethnicity of our clients. We look at them as being eligible based on HUD regulations. So that is-
You of course recognize that if I was suing a private company, that just the, just those statistics alone would be a de facto discrimination. You would recognize that, wouldn't you?
Well, I recognize, sir, is that we cannot discriminate as much as what I'm here.
And I'm asking you, why does it appear, why does it appear that you do?
We cannot discriminate against anyone who is income-eligible and a citizen of the United States or a legal resident alien. If you apply, you meet the criteria, you're income-eligible, you're assisted based on date and time of eligibility. We do not, I do not, my team does not, look at the ethnic background of our clients. It is irrelevant to us. It's, what's relevant to us is being eligible within the federal regulations and quite-
No, you can say it.
Oh, I'm not going to say it.
Don't worry about me. People say really bad things about me.
Yeah, I'm actually offended by that statement, being an African-American man.
Wait a minute, why would you be offended? Why would you be-
I'm offended because of the innuendo. However-
Well, how else could it be anything else?
The eligibility of our program is not determined by ethnic background.
Okay, well, let me ask you this. What has your department done to look at why this imbalance exists? And don't, don't you, don't you dare ask like you're offended by this. These are your statistics. It was your, your department that sent me a letter threatening to sue me, putting those statistics in it. It's not as if it was a secret to you. And what I'm asking is, whenever I see any type of discrimination of any kind, I think the best thing to do is to address it. What have you done to address it?
Let me say this. Our agency, to my knowledge, did not write a letter to you. HUD may have because I have-
They certainly did.
I spoke to the local HUD office, and that's outside of our jurisdiction. However, we, again, I'm going to continue to repeat this, we do not concern ourselves with ethnic background of any of our clients. That is not a HUD requirement to be on the program. And we do not steer clients. We do not give, restrict their choice in which they want to live. A client's eligibility is based on income, date, and time of application. Any other things or anecdotal or opinions that aren't based in fact, I can't speak on or speak to. If you would like to review our waiting list and how we determine who's on the program- If you would like to review our waiting list and how we determine who's on the program, you're more than welcome. We're fine with that.
What I'm asking you, I'm asking you a very simple question. I'm asking you, what have you done to find out why this imbalance exists? You know, I've got a lot of Hispanic poor people. I've got a lot of African-American poor people and a lot of Caucasian poor people up here. And whenever I see those funds being handled down in LA and handled in what seems to be a discriminatory manner, I am obligated to ask the questions, what are you doing to address the imbalance, if anything?
If anything. Well, what we can do is we can determine eligibility based on a fair criteria, which is what we're doing. We can open a waiting list to everyone and notify everyone when it's available. And based on date and time of application, we can determine your availability and provide assistance to you. We cannot, fortunate or unfortunate, when the program availability was, when the program was available, based on the people who applied at that time, when the waiting list was open, clients who needed the program applied at that time based on date and time. We select clients based on date and time. It's when we open the program, the clients that apply. So if it was predominantly Hispanic, predominantly Caucasian, predominantly African-American who applied at that time, then the percentage would be skewed in that way when we go to place people on the program. Because it's who applied at the time the list is open and it's based on date and time of application.
When this, when it opens up, you know, when there's slots available, where do you market it at?
We market it...
How do you market it?
Internet, all local papers, all newspapers in which we work within, such as the Antelope Valley Press, and our website, local libraries, we market it to everywhere.
And do you think those sources are going to hit your target audience?
Those sources, normally we open the waiting list. I worked for the City of Los Angeles for over 16 years. We open a waiting list, two days, we have to close it because of the number of hits that we will receive. Yes, through word of mouth and through those media outlets, the word gets out and applicants do apply.
Do you advertise in Hispanic newspapers?
Yes, we do. In Los Angeles, La Pina, every newspaper in which we have jurisdiction, local newspapers, we advertise it.
If it was reversed, if there were, say, 70% Hispanic, wouldn't you be concerned?
No, I wouldn't. If it was, as I stated, for the City of Los Angeles Housing Authority, the majority of our clients in our public housing program are Hispanic. And I oversaw the entire public housing program for the city of LA. Majority of our clients were Hispanic. And I had the same response when other groups would question why the disparity. It's based on date and time of application and who is eligible at the time when we process applicants. Doesn't matter the ethnic background.
With these 3,700 families that have now moved into the Antelope Valley, you do recognize that we don't have the county resources that are down in the LA, Long Beach, Pasadena area. We don't have them here. That when they come up here, they probably are not going to get health care. They're probably not going to have transportation that's adequate to get them to college or to work. What do you do to notify them of that? And more importantly, what is the Housing Authority doing to get the county to transfer more funds up here to service this population? You know, I'll take 8,000 Section 8 people if you give me the funds to help them. But what you're sending them to is a house. No health care, no schooling, no work. Is anybody taking that into consideration? I mean, it seems to me this is a pretty cheap way for Los Angeles to transfer their problems without having to be accountable for them and without having to help them in any way. And what are you doing to rectify that?
The Housing Authority, there is legislation that Congress is introducing right now, choice neighborhoods, sustainable communities, that would partner housing authorities with local agencies to improve the health care, education, and transportation. However, those are outside of our purview. There are departments that handle that. We handle housing. We handle housing. Our purview is housing. There's the Department of Transportation, Department of Education, Health Services. We are welcome to partner with them to try to assist as much as possible, but our mandate is housing. Each agency has their mandate. Ours is housing.
Do you give these folks that are exercising their choice any notice? Do you give them anything in writing that says, look, if you go to Lancaster, you get sick, you may not survive? Do you give them anything like that? That if your children need to go to Children's Hospital, it's going to be a four-hour bus ride? Do you give them anything like that? Do you tell them what they're coming into? Because that is true, isn't it? It's 2014 before we have an adequate county health facility, isn't it?
Sir, we also don't tell the hundreds and hundreds of homeless families that we assist every year that we believe in a housing-first model, that housing works. And it's been proven, if you read the statistics, you provide housing first to sustain a family. You housing first and then you work with other agencies to provide the services. So no, we do not tell them what services are available in the community. But if you read any of the studies, it will show you, it will say that in order to decrease homelessness, in order to sustain families, to ensure they're unified, you must provide housing first. And our mandate is to provide housing. And we've done, based on HUD requirements, an excellent job. By all accounts, HUD looks at us, we're doing a great job. We have agencies calling me daily, asking if we would run their programs for them. Because we're doing such a great job of providing housing first, which is what our priority, which is what we're mandated to do.
How many of these families are single-parent families? How many were two-parent families when they came into the program? I mean, it's nice to say that we're doing a great job without telling us how that's measured. How it's measured to me is two parents in the family. Because those are the kids that thrive, you know? And that's not going to happen when we don't have the services. You know, what breaks families apart more than anything is no money, no job. We know that. Isn't that true?
I would agree with you on that. And I would agree with you, the best possible family scenario would be a two-parent household. But the reality, Section 8 outside of Section 8, that's a problem nationwide, the lack of two-person household. So Section 8 is not set up to resolve that problem, sir. But I would say this, having a secure, safe place to reside does a long way to ensure kids fit to complete their education, that they don't get involved with gangs, don't get involved with drugs, that if we provide housing...
Which is precisely our point.
If we provide housing, we are sustaining families.
When you create an imbalance in these neighborhoods, when the number of people renting reaches a tipping point, you are putting them in a guaranteed failure environment. You know it, I know it, every urban planner knows it. I mean, can you disagree with that?
Well, no, I'm not disagreeing with that at all. Concentration of any one, of anything in one area, high income, low income, middle income, Hispanic, African-American, Caucasian, is a problem. There should be no concentration. We should deconcentrate as much as possible. And one of our mandates is, one of our things we're scored on is trying to deconcentrate our assistance. However, the overarching tenet of the program is choice. I can't repeat that enough times. Choice. When Congress and HUD set this program up, it's set it on a basis of choice, which means clients have the right, like you have the right to choose where you're living and you want to choose what's best for your family, our clients have a right to choose what they feel is best for their family, where they're going to get the best education, where they're going to feel safe, where they can get the most for their money, just as you, the other council members, and I would like to have that choice living here in America.
You know, it sounds really good, but you know as well as I do what's happening. The reality is much different. I'm sure you read the Atlantic Monthly article regarding Section 8.
No, I haven't.
How could you not have read that? This is what you do for a living.
I read about 20 articles on Section 8 in public housing.
Send him 20 copies.
I read legislation, congressional testimony, newspapers, everything on housing, and some I do not read all of them.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else?
I have a couple things.
Okay, sir.
You said Chicago, New Orleans, what part of theirs are, what percentage of theirs are terminated?
I don't know the actual numbers, but I could get the research and get it for you. It was just during the conference as we were discussing program compliance, those agencies were mentioned as far as having programs compliance issues with the number of terminations. However, I can look, go to those agencies and try to get that data for you as much as they're forthcoming in providing it, but that was information that was provided during the conferences.
In Antelope Valley, how many are in the unincorporated area?
Unincorporated, I don't have the statistics for you, sir, but I can get that for you.
How about Palmdale?
Palmdale, how many clients?
Out of the 3,782?
Sure, I have that number for you, sir. Palmdale, the number of clients is 1,442. Oh, and actually I do have the unincorporated outside of Palmdale, there are 90 in the incorporated area. Well, I just wanted to clarify, City Manager Mr. Bezogian is correct. The investigations unit is a collaboration between the county of Los Angeles, the cities of Palmdale, Lancaster, Paramount, and the last city, I can't remember the last city, and the county of Los Angeles Housing Authority. We all contribute to funding the investigations unit, to a tune of over, I believe the budget last year was 1.5 for our entire investigation unit, 1.5 million. All of which was not, all of which was a collaboration of all of the agencies I mentioned. Cities of Lancaster, I believe, contributed roughly 500,000 of that 1.5 or 250,000, somewhere around there.
I think it's less than, I don't have the number off the top of my head.
Yes, exactly.
We'll look it up.
Do you know what percentage of the available housing in Lancaster is Section 8?
The available housing, no, sir, I do not have the statistics on available rental properties in Antelope Valley. That's outside of our scope.
Mayor Paris, are you asking the number of Section 8 compared to the number of total households? There's roughly 56,000, give or take, total households in Lancaster, maybe slightly more than that.
So what percentage does this represent? Do we know?
2,300, double add is about 4% to 5%.
4%, 5%.
Of all available. And of the rental units, rental units are about 30%. I'm doing that memory total of the 56,000.
Good. Thank you.
Wait a minute. By the numbers that you gave me, you only terminate less than 2% of the people?
We terminate clients in which we've, after investigation, confirmed that they have committed a program violation and then we terminate them. There is no target percentage of number of terminations. Once, we work with the Sheriff's Department and we work with our investigations team. If anytime someone is confirmed to have committed a program violation or a crime that meets a violation of our rules, we terminate immediately.
You're a federal program, correct?
Yes, sir.
If you have medical marijuana in the state of California, are you terminated?
We're not, we're, our admin plan says no drugs at all, including marijuana. So if our clients are investigated for use of marijuana and we're able to corroborate that, then yes, we will terminate you. We have terminated clients for marijuana use.
Even for medical marijuana?
Our admin plan says you cannot use drugs.
One question before you step down, Mr. Jenkins. I'm real interested about the investigative unit because you spoke about the high marks that HUD gave you. So the county has how many people assigned to the investigative unit? I know we're funding a certain portion of it.
Well, total, our investigation team, numbers offhand, I believe we have a 10-person unit. However, I have just, when I took over in this position, have consolidated both our public housing and our Section 8 investigation teams into a program compliance unit to expand our operations. So offhand, I believe the total numbers, including attorneys, it's between 15 to 16 staff people.
Okay. So if we've got close to 30% of the units up in the Antelope Valley, then four or five of those are going to be assigned up here to the office then?
30%, sir.
Well, when we took both Palmdale and the unincorporated area.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was trying to do the math here. I would assume if we're getting our proportionate share of Section 8, I would assume that we would get a proportionate share of the signed people. Now that you've told us that we've got this great office, you know, one of four, I would think we'd have at least 25 or 30% of those people up here working day in and day out to help us.
I believe we have two, I have to research to be accurate, but I believe we have two full-time investigators here. We have two analysts working in our office that's working with the investigations team.
Okay.
How many total analysts do you have?
Analysts? We have one, two. In the new program compliance unit, we have four, two of which work out in the Antelope Valley.
How many total investigators?
And one in our Center for Springs office is also dedicated to the Antelope Valley.
Total investigators?
Investigators, sir. The actual numbers I don't have in front of me, but I believe it's, let me see, I believe there's six or seven of them, but I have to research and give you that exact number. We had some changes in staffing, so I don't have the exact number for you, but I can get it for you.
For LA County?
For our program, the Housing Authority of the County of Los Angeles.
I just had one more question.
Is this why Mr. Rogan didn't come back?
What?
Most people don't come back.
No, he will come back. I'm sorry, that was a bad joke. That was not it. I oversee the Housing Authority. Mr. Rogan is Executive Director for Community Development Commission. So it's my assignment in my oversight capacity to respond to the Housing Authority needs on both sides of the House, meaning public housing, affordable housing, and Section 8.
Sheriff, before, we were told this is going to be monthly?
If you choose. I requested to be on your city council meeting agenda monthly. I requested to be in a revitalization meeting.
That's a great idea.
So we could answer any question. We, I, I and my team want to be a part of this community and every community we serve. So every unincorporated area where there's a city council or a community meeting, I want to be there. I want to hear their concerns as to as much as possible, as much as possible, within the regulations, try to address those concerns so we can be a, we can enhance the community. We do not want to be looked upon as something that's bringing the community down. Because we feel that housing is a vital resource and a vital need that we provide.
Don't you think he would be a great asset for one of our commissions? If he wants to give us a monthly update?
Actually, you know, we're the research and development city for the Sheriff's Department. And I'm being very serious now. It seems to me that the Section 8 program could be more efficient and efficacious than it is in elevating people's lives and improving people's lives. What I'm hearing is that you're very good at putting them in a house. And what I would be open to is doing something much more than that and seeing if perhaps we could do it differently than the rest of the country. And despite what you may believe, you know, I am not, I do not have a wanted sign on everybody in Section 8. But what I do see is a terribly ineffective situation that could be so much more than it is. And, you know, if you guys are open to that, we're open to that.
We, and I'm saying for myself and my team, we're definitely open to it. I will say this, we have a family self-sufficiency program and we're open to lobbying to HUD and to Congress to put some other things in place to do more than provide housing. Because that's not what we want to do. On the public housing side, we feel we're building communities. We want to do the same thing with Section 8. We want to uplift our clients. And we would happy to partner with you on, to lobby, to start legislation, to provide other things that can, for our clients, to help them advance in their lives, not just in housing, in education, in employment, and financial literacy. We're willing to work with you and any ideas you have and we'll come to the table with some ideas we have.
I think Mr. Krist has an excellent idea. If you would like to have you or someone else that has a pen, you know, some authority to do something, not, you know, I don't need a talking head, I've got lots of talking heads. I need somebody with some power to do something. We would extend an invitation to put you on our Neighborhood Revitalization Commission.
Please do so. And I would, one of our team would definitely accept that offer, either myself or another member of the management team of our Section 8 program who does have the authority to bring back ideas and make decisions.
Now, I got to have one provizio on that, in that I have to get Councilwoman Marcus' buy-off on that because she did develop that commission. You know how I start talking before I...
Mr. Jenkins, I do the same thing. Mr. Jenkins, you might have just answered my question. Because my question was going to be, do you have any avenue to suggest to HUD, which is federally run, and you just mentioned that you can go and lobby? There are things that you can do on the behalf of the people that you serve in Los Angeles County. And what you just said was, because my question... County, and what you just said was, because my question was going to be, is there any avenue that you have, that you can go to HUD, that you can tell them, you know, there's this city out in the desert, Lancaster, that has, has some special needs, and we've looked at this city, and we think that there are some things that maybe we should be doing differently instead of the standard across the line, you know, across the board. And one of my biggest concerns is the port ends versus those local people that are here, that are waiting, that are languishing, that have been on the list for many years, waiting to get on Section Eight, when possibly you've got a family that has been on Section Eight for twenty-plus years, coming from Maine, that wants to move into Lancaster, and why shouldn't that local person be looked at first? That's what I'm asking for, we're asking for some special recognition here. You know, there's other suggestions that have come up over the last two years, because I've been waiting for someone to say, hey, you know, we're just here waiting to go to lobby, you know, for you in D.C., wherever you have to go, but, you know, people tell me all the time, why don't we have them do random drug testing for these people who are taking the taxpayers' monies? And, you know, why don't we have that? And also, the other thing is, why don't we get reform done to this program where it's not from cradle to grave?
That one, I would love to be a part of lobbying for as an employee and as a citizen.
Well, why do you have such a problem with the, the random drug testing? I mean, if you go to work, we were at the AVTA today, if you go work for AVTA, you have to be drug-free, you just said that this program is drug-free.
Yes, it is.
And AVTA has random drug testing.
As an employer, I believe you have the right when you employ someone, but if you're a citizen, I don't feel like you have the right to come ask me to take a drug test at my house, I don't feel like I have the right to go to someone else's home.
Well, the federal government might.
That's my personal belief, however, again, we're willing to sit with, I'm willing, our team to sit with you and think of some ideas, a way we can improve the program, and we, within the rules, or with some that may be a little skirting, the rules, we'll look to help advocate for changes that best suits the L.A. County program. We would advocate for what's best for the L.A. County program. Again, I must, I must say this, though, Antelope Valley is a part of the L.A. Housing Authority of County of Los Angeles program, so when we advocate for the, for changes, it's for the County of, the Housing Authority of County of Los Angeles program. So, within that program, there's so many cities and areas in which we have jurisdiction.
Clearly, there are special needs in Lancaster, but I want you to seriously consider getting actively involved in our Neighborhood Revitalization Commission. We are doing things that no other city is doing. You know, we do have community health homes that are addressing the health needs in these neighborhoods. We're doing a lot of things differently, and we'd like you to take part in that. What we, what we really have trouble with is just, you know, it's like you've got paragraphs you're supposed to say, you know? And I understand that, but I'm saying that, that it doesn't need to be that way. We really could do things differently here. I mean, I'd like, I'd love to see Section Eight here if everybody graduated from college that was in it, you know, if we, if we had measurable things that showed us that was successful. Anyway.
We'd love to make some change. One of the things, reason why we're, we are so excited about how we're performing, is because when we reach HUD's designation of high performer, and we do, do so for two consecutive years, we can apply for what's called MTW status. And when we get MTW status, we can make some significant changes on how the program is run, such as some of the ideas in which you've suggested, but we need to get there first. And we've, we've taken the steps, and we've positioned ourselves to obtain that high performer status, and once we get there and maintain it for two consecutive years, we can apply for MTW, and then we can look at term limits, for instance, we can look at certain eligibility requirements, we can look at those things, but we have to get there. We're not there yet as far as getting to the high performer status, but a rating, where I anticipate our team getting there in the real near future.
Thank you. And do they give you combat pay for coming up here?
No, yeah, no, he, during the directors' meeting, he looked and said, are you sure? I said, I'm fine. I said in front of city councils, board of supervisors, different committees, I'll be fine. But I would love to be on the revitalization committee, because I've fielded several calls from national HUD and local HUD about what do they do? They've received letters, they've received calls, they've received inquiries about what allegedly is being done on that committee, so I would love to be able to intelligently answer what actually is going on.
I think you'll like it.
Well, I was still wondering if Mr. Tirico wanted to come up and just give a nutshell.
Can I, can I, I'm gonna sit with Mr. Tirico, is that okay? Thank you, guys, thank you for allowing us to speak.
Thank you. Generally, gentle.
I could probably explain the rent comprehensive issue for you. What it is, is HUD lays out a maximum rent standard for all of Los Angeles County based on the median house price in Los Angeles County or rental price. And then what happens is, is the Housing Authority conducts a rent comp study in our area, as what's an allowable rent for the unit that's being solicited for rent. As that works is, in the past, it used to be you used three unsubsidized rent comprehensive rents for rental units in the immediate vicinity of that unit. That changed several years ago when the county contracted with RentElec, who's a third-party agency who provides those rent comps, and there's been issues related to that, because it went away from the standard that the Code of Federal Regulations dictated to a comparable rent through a company, and a lot of times, those rents were not comparable. It's difficult here in our community, because we have some older homes next to new development and things like that, that create issues for that. At the same time, the owners have the ability to challenge whatever the rent comp or proposal rent is from the Housing Authority, but that standard that HUD sets forth is the maximum standard, not the minimum standard. Okay, the other issue is, is that in other counties, like in San Bernardino County, for instance, they do have a variance for redlands. So redlands has a different rent standard than the rest of San Bernardino County, okay? There is part of that as West Bakersfield of Kern County as well. Some of the things that we brought forward is our, our rent comps here in Lancaster are more comparable to like eastern Kern County, okay, or Victorville, for example, San Bernardino County, and those issues, that, that's the things that we're talking about as it relates to that. For clarification for the investigations unit, there's three investigators that are assigned here to the Antelope Valley. In the City of Lancaster, there's two part-time investigators who are funded fifty percent by the City of Lancaster, the other fifty percent is funded through Supervisor Antonovich's office, they are not funded by the Housing Authority. Also, an analyst, who is funded partly by the City of Lancaster, as well as the supervisor's office, and their supervisor, a percentage of his time, that he works out of the downtown office. So we are fully funding that with the supervisor's office, not the Housing Authority.
You guys are gonna have to give, give us some more money.
Pardon me?
The Housing Authority's gonna have to give us some more money for investigators.
That's been an issue for, ongoing for some time. We are in the process of scheduling meetings. I'm sorry, I have to... Now, I should have had the same opportunity to do that.
Okay, I have to rebut, because I've seen the numbers, and actually, we just finished our budget, we just finished our budget, and to that end, to bring clarity to it, we're trying to schedule meetings with the city manager right now to look at some other options for, to conducting investigations. We're looking at doing some other things, and how we fund it, and where the investigation team sits. So we're already in process, I've been in, our office has been in communication with both the Palmdale City Manager, Lancaster City Manager office, to try to coordinate that meeting, so we can do it a better way. So we're, we're in negotiations with that right now.
But how are you rebuting me? I'm saying as it stands now.
No, but I was going to rebut the money, but then I decided not to go back and forth, because...
No, because the money's two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars, I know exactly what it is.
But what about that redlands idea?
Well, that's something that we had a discussion about in a past meeting, that we had downtown in Midorien, that's an issue that they would have to bring forward to HUD for that variance. There is some issues, because we, you know, it's out there on their site, so you can pull it up. So there, there must be a method for it, but we went through that several years ago with portability. You know, there was actually a, a time where we didn't believe that we could put, people that ported into the area through the screening process, which they do do now, but that was done because Supervisor Antonovich went back and met with Mr. Alfonso Jackson, who was the Secretary of HUD at the time, and asked the question. So, through the local office, we were told no, that that was not possible, and as that was introduced to Washington, D.C., it was determined that it was possible, and it was done. And that, this has been a, there's been a lot of issues that have take, that we've gone through in this, because there is some interpretation issues there, there is some discretion for the local office versus Washington, there's all kinds of things as we go through this process. You know, I think the thing about it is, for now, it's like, you know, the protocols changed for the investigators, that was due to some litigation issues that took place, you know, unfortunately, you know, we all know, it's kind of like the same thing with the Sheriff's Department, you know, you take people to jail, it makes them mad, okay, you take things away from people, there are some issues you're gonna deal with, it's a fallout that it relates to that, but we, our feeling is, is that we should inhibit how we administer the, the program integrity as it relates to litigation, that should not be the case. You know, a violation is a violation of the program, or it's not. And there is examples of things that have occurred, that I could probably go on and on and on about here, that Mr. Jenkins is very well aware of, that we've had issues and tried to close those gaps where there's been problems. It's an ongoing process, it's something we worked through, but we, as a city, have stepped up to the plate in dealing with this issue, and provided that, those resources to the Housing Authority, to work in partnership with them, as we do with every other outside entity, as a, as a practice of this city. I think it's, at the same time, you know, there is a certain accountability for their agency, that, that we need to be open and have those discussions about, and not be afraid to address those issues, and I believe this is a good step in that process, okay? At the same time, I could, you know, I could go on forever, you could ask me a million questions, and I'd be happy to do, have that discussion at any time.
And, and, next meeting, if you don't mind, I'll bring the exact budget numbers, so you guys can see the dollars that the Housing Authority puts forth towards investigations versus the various cities in which we partner.
Good.
And the County of Los Angeles, because I have those budget numbers, I just didn't believe them.
But I'm, but I'm speaking...
I also want to make certain that, that they are on, you know, they have a seat at the Revitalization Commission.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Jenkins, and I do commend him for being available and willing to go to that and do on a monthly basis. They will be scheduled for the next revitalization commission. What I was gonna ask is, you know, strike while the iron's hot, I'd like to put on the next agenda, if you so choose to nominate or consider a nomination to that commission.
Okay, I just put him on the commission itself. Do we have space? We got room?
Well, I don't, we can make an ex officio, how about if we started out with him a seat at the table ex officio, and then work into it?
Good. Well, he probably ought to have a seat with you guys, and then let's decide, and let's talk to Mr. Jenkins, does he want to be on the commission itself?
That's a good, yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Because he's probably gonna have to talk to...
Yeah, talk to Sean, and then also the rest of the management team, it's either me myself or a delegate, because we do have a manager now for our Antelope Valley area.
Good, just remember, I want somebody with a pen.
She, Ms. Mann, who is in the office, can make, I mean, in the audience, can make decisions.
We would request that both of you be at the next meeting, though, the Neighborhood Revitalization Commission, if that's okay, Councilwoman Marcus?
In the beginning, I'm going to be, if I'm, if I'm in town, I'll be at the meetings.
Wonderful. And let's see what we can do, let's change the world again. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. This same rule applies if you wish to speak on non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. Any agenda items to be removed?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this time you want to announce about NB1, because we're gathering additional information on the...
Yes, we're, we're taking that NB1 off until either the next meeting or the meeting after.
Yeah, so for the benefit of the public, just so they know.
Is that NB1, new business one?
NB1 is the Palmdale Power, the Palmdale Power Plant item, and you, Adas, and staff is recommending that that be...
Yes, that's correct.
Referring.
As far as the agency consent calendar, anything to be removed?
No, no, sir.
Thank you. Okay, motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Or, if they want to, if you've already submitted a card on NB1, then you need to submit another card for the, if you want to speak at the, what's that called? Non-agendized items, okay, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the, the agency minutes?
I, so moved.
Second.
Let's vote. Unanimous, oh, is there a motion to excuse Ron Smith's absence?
So moved.
Through second, okay, let's vote. Unanimous, moving on, RCC1, oh, we already did that, RCC2, is there a motion?
I'll move we approve RCC2.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Unanimous, Agency New Business, RNB1, we'll hear from Elizabeth Brubaker.
Do we have a card?
Do we have any cards on it? Okay, wanna go, wanna go forward without, all right, is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve RNB number one on Agency New Business, Resolution Number fifteen dash ten.
I'll second that.
Unanimous, Council Consent Calendar, is there a motion to, well, anybody have any prob...
I make a motion that we approve the...
Is there anything to be removed? I know, I'm gonna take nineteen off.
Okay.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve items one through eighteen?
I'll move we approve the consent calendar as currently comprised.
One through eighteen, right.
One through eighteen.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Unanimous, okay, I have to recuse myself on CC nineteen. Is that the property my wife owns?
That is in the Lotre area, that's correct.
My, my wife owns some property in that area, so I have to remove myself. Ms. Marcus, will you take the...
Okay, I believe we let the record show that Mayor Paris has recused himself from CC nineteen and has left the dais, and do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve CC nineteen.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. And it is unanimous with Mayor Paris out of the room, if you want to get a... And the meeting's been turned back over to Mayor Paris.
Open the public hearing on PH1, and we have a staff report from Carlisle Workman. Do we have any speaker cards on that? Can we waive it? And Mr. Workman seems to approve of that idea.
He rather quickly walked back.
Yeah, I'll make a motion then to...
Wait a minute, let's close the public hearing. Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number ten dash fifty-nine on public hearing number one.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. City manager, any announcements?
No, sir.
That was quick. City clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for public business from the floor on non-agendized items. Any person who would like to address the city council on items not on the agenda, may fill out a speaker card, you'll find them at the back of the council chambers. We respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible, so that if necessary, the council, the city manager, or city staff will be able to get in touch with you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when you begin to speak. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you will see three lights, the green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have thirty seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg and Diane Butts, High Desert Track Club, High Desert Heat...
High Desert Heat Track Club.
Come on. Come on.
Hello, Mayor Paris and the council. Um, I don't know if you recall, but I was here last year. Uh, I just wanted to kind of report on the progress of our organization. This was our second year, and, uh, I'm happy to announce that we have six young athletes that qualified for this year's Junior Olympics. And, uh, by the way, last year we were able to raise the money to send the kids to, uh, North Carolina. Um, this year, the Junior Olympics are a little bit closer to us, they're in Sacramento, California. Um, we've been working with, uh, Mark Davie at the, from the Antelope Valley Credit Union, and Lancaster Elks Lodge, Lancaster Erody Club, and we've done a lot of fundraising. Um, one of our goals last year was to, uh, purchase a fully automatic timing system, which we successfully did. It ran somewhere around $6,000. Um, then I come to find out that, other than Antelope Valley College, we're the only organization here in the Antelope Valley with a fully auto, fully automatic timing system. Um, we've timed Antelope Valley High School, Eastside High School, uh, we timed their meets, um, we timed the meet that the junior high puts on every year. Uh, uh, and I, I'm, you know, very proud of that. It's kind of a sophisticated system, but we were able, the group of us were able to sit down and learn it, and we did a good job. It made the high school and the junior high school meet go by a whole lot, you know, a whole lot faster. Um, the, last year, we had six kids make it to the Junior Olympics, four of them were on a relay team. This year, unfortunately, none of our relay teams made it, but six of our kids made it in individual events, which is a very, very difficult thing to do. Um, one young man in particular that I'm extremely proud of, he joined our track club late. I saw him at one of the junior high school meets, and he joined, he joined us late, he came to a couple of meets, didn't do very well, but he was very, very determined, and he worked very, very hard. Um, I believe he comes from a very low-income family. His mom, uh, you know, she couldn't afford anything, so we as a club completely and totally funded everything. Um, our regional meet was in Las Vegas, you know, we rented, uh, a van, uh, uh, we paid for his hotel room, um, and he actually qualified for the Junior Olympics. It was a, you know, very pleasant surprise for us, uh, and him, his mom, you know, I sent her a video, let her, you know, watch, watch him compete. Um, uh, this, this, uh, well, gosh, I'm going to lose words, but, uh, the six kids, one was named Janiah Brown. She actually won the Region 15 Championships in the 800 meters in the Bantam Division. And what makes that, you know, really extraordinary is each age division, there are two-year age divisions. The Bantam Division happened to be nine and 10-year-old. She's nine years old and actually won our region. And again, our region consists of San Diego, Southern California, and Nevada. Um, young man, Quayshawn Cunningham, came in second in the 100 meters and third in the 200 meters. Uh, Krishan Jackson, the one I just was mentioning, he came in third in the 400 meters. Young lady by the name of Sasha Goff, she actually won our region in the 80-meter hurdles. She won our region in the pentathlon. She took second place in the 200 meters and second place in the 400 meters. And then, we have one more young lady named Quinnique Bell. She's 10 years old, she took third place in the 400 meters in her age division also. And the last, uh, young lady that made it is, is my daughter Brittany Butts. She took third place in the long jump to advance to, uh, this year's Junior Olympics.
Congratulations.
So, I just wanted to, you know-
Excuse me, how many, how many children actually are involved in the program?
We, this year, we had 157 kids.
Wow. Is there anything we can do to help you?
Um-
Other than money?
Other than money, well, I, I've been asked by the Youth Chair for USA Track and Field, Southern California Association, to try to head up a conference up here in the Antelope Valley. Um, I, I, I made that my goal. I'm going to do what it takes to have a track and field conference. We're one team.
How many people would that bring up to the Lancaster?
I'm, I'm hoping thousands. I mean, we have, you know, Rosemont, Little Rock.
Mr. Green, can you, uh, get together? And would you talk to Mr. Green? He, you know, he runs the Parks and Rec, and let's see what we can do here.
Yes, we, we want to get a conference up here. There's, as we found out, there's a lot of, a lot of kids. Um, I also found out through, through Mark Davie that, um, Antelope Valley College has put in a request to host the 2012 Junior Olympics. And, you know, I kind of think that would be really, really great, you know?
Be huge. We sure got the stadium for it now, don't we?
Sure have the stadium. So, uh, that, that's just what I wanted to say. Um, we always are looking for donations. Um, we can completely fund, you know, the kids now, but, you know, donations help.
Sure.
Always, they always help, so I just wanted to-
Thank you, Mr. Butts.
Bring that. Thank you, guys. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Edward Schroeder?
I like to talk about Lancaster Boulevard. I think it's a nice project that they're working on, Lancaster Boulevard.
Thank you.
And I was thinking about making a suggestion. You ever heard of the Third Street Promenade in Santa Monica? I was thinking about they could do something like that, like in Lancaster Boulevard, like close the downtown off to all traffic, and, uh-
One step at a time.
Yeah, and, uh, so, so that would be a good idea, like, put like kiosks up instead of, uh, making it one lane, because it's, uh, I don't know how they can get the traffic to their, one lane on each side.
There, there will actually be days where it is closed.
Oh, it will be actually, some certain days it will be closed. Oh, yeah, because it's just what I want to, they're doing a good job on it. I like the, uh, the palm trees they're putting on it and stuff. And, uh, what, you know what's the park across the street? Uh, you know when it's going to open, when they're going to be finished with it?
No, but I'd sure like to.
Okay, yeah, all right. Okay, thanks.
The, uh, can, you want to-
I do.
The contractual date is September 15th without some of the weather delays, so we're looking probably the beginning of October. Hopefully, we're working with the developer.
Okay, yeah.
The grass needs to establish itself inside.
Yeah, okay, yeah, good, yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Michelle Egberts?
Long time, Lucy.
How are you?
Panga. Can I move this up to you real quick?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Mayor Paris, as you are aware of, I am a parolee, and I had the unfortunate experience of being in one of your unlicensed sober living group homes here in Lancaster. And I went back to custody for standing up for my roommates, two who were Mental Health America participants and one an SSI recipient. Now, this is uncalled for. We have a man that came into Lancaster that bought five homes here. I'm mad.
I, I, I want you to tell me about this, because I'm concerned about these unlicensed facilities.
I am too. I am too. Can I stop the clock, please?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, but don't abuse it.
When I came before, when I, the catalyst behind this was when I came before you on the Reducing Precedivism Strategic Initiative Program. It really irritated some parole agents, okay? So I was told to get out of my boyfriend's home within five hours and find a landline home. Well, going to AA, I heard of this gentleman. He distributes his cards around town. He preys upon parolees and those Mental Health America participants. I went into his home that evening. The first thing he did was he, he evicted a woman on moment's notice. Now, there's an oral agreement here. There is no, you know, eviction, immediate eviction, or anything. There's no lease.
You know, I want to, I want to be careful in, you know, it's televised.
I understand that, and I'm watching my words very carefully here.
But I, but I, what I'd like you to do is I'd, I'd like you to meet with Mr. Durico, I think he's still here.
Well, there's a problem there too. I've tried.
Um, that's, I'm sorry.
And I even called Mr. Rozigan about this.
Okay.
Okay? Now, we've hired, I've hired an attorney. His name is Michael Magason. He's out of Los Angeles, to represent-
Went out of town?
Yes, yes.
That's a point, that's not a point in your favor.
I know, I know. To represent me and my three roommates. Those, my roommates I stuck up for. I'm very proud of the Sheriff's Department. They protected me. I was a parolee. This man was banned from the property. He would have been trespassing every time if they would have caught him. He sent another woman over, and she forced her way into the home. I called 911 and stayed on the phone with Jer-
Let me do this. I, I will be in the meeting with you and Mr. Durico, all right?
Would you? I would appreciate that.
Okay, and, uh, if you'll see Mr. Casillas at the back of the room, he's the one wearing the red tie, uh, he'll set that up, okay?
I appreciate that.
And, and let's, I think that would probably be a more efficacious way of doing this, okay?
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lyle Talbot?
Left.
Julia Missells? Hi, Julia, how are you?
Please bear with me, I've never done this before.
You need to use the microphone, I can't hear you.
Um, please bear with me, I've never, like-
Help her out here. Come on, you guys.
Okay. Um, last meeting, uh, that I was here, they were speaking about, uh, a law about punishing parents for their children. And, um, I had some sort of suggestions, because I agree with it on some points, and on a little bit, it does go too far, like you said. Like, you were a bad kid, and your mother would have had to go to jail. Well-
I was a bad kid, and my mother would have to go to jail. I guess that sums it up.
Well, I'm not terrible, but I've, I got in trouble, you know, once last year for something not even that bad. But, if they had, you know, done an investigation possibly on the family to see how the family life is, then that would somehow, you know, you could stop gang violence there, like you were pointing out, and you wouldn't have to prosecute some innocent people. Uh, because some people really can't control their kids if they sneak out at 3:00 in the morning, you know, through their window repeatedly. I mean, you could sit there and watch. But there are just, there are ways. Um, well, possibly, you know, to incorporate into the whole thing where it's, um, prosecuting parents, you could just investigate the families, instead of going straight to, you know, fining or, you know.
We're, we're actually working on this. I, I'm, I think that we're going to make some progress, and we're going to do something that's beneficial, that addresses the concerns that were raised at the last meeting. And it should be on the agenda.
Uh, we, looks like we get it on the next agenda, August 10th. There's a couple of pieces of information that we need to work with the city attorney on.
So we'll put it on the website, and Julia, why don't you come back then and help us work it out?
Of course.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Why aren't we running that through the Criminal Justice Commission first?
Oh, you know, it's something that Vice Mayor, uh, Smith has been working on for about two years. And, and I'm not sure how he wants to do that, but I, but I am, I am extending him the, the courtesy of letting him make that decision. Uh, you, you might want to discuss that with him. You know, he may want to present it to Criminal Justice. In the future, anything like this will go through Criminal Justice.
Okay, great. Mayor Paris? I misspoke. We may have some things that are going to take some precedent based on what we talk about later, so we may not get it until the 27th.
You know, I hear the city attorney's busy these days.
Always, that's what he tells us.
Barbara Missells, please.
And she's doing well, too. Yes, she is.
Yeah, you should be proud.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Once upon a time in the land of Star Spangled, there lived a family called Clover. And they had this property there, and they had a fruit tree there, and they had a home there. And lo and behold, one day, across the river came this family, man and a woman. They entered the property, opened her door, and then sat at the table and demanded food, clothing, education, not only for themselves, but for their family that lived across the river that they were bringing over. And she said, "By the way, I, I want to know where your husband works, because I'll work for a little bit less." And so she said to the family called Shamrock, "Would you please leave my home?" She said, "No, wait a minute." She said, "I want the grant deed to your property." She said, "No, you can't have the grant deed to my property. And by the way, why'd you pick the fruit off of my tree, the fruit of our labor? Get off." She, "And by the way, you dropped a seedling on the ground. So, Miss Shamrock, Mr. and Mrs., please pick up your, your, your seedling and take it with you." She said, "Oh, no, it's on your property. Now it's a clover." She said, "No, my family's a clover. This is a shamrock. Take your shamrock and go." And she said, "How did you know I came from across the river?" She said, "I noticed because of your brogue." Now, that's not racial profiling. What it is is saying, "Stay on your side of the river, let me enjoy the fruit of my labor, and don't come over and take your seedlings with." Because the Constitution says, in the Star Spangled Bannerland, that two people who beget a child, if they are American citizens, the child is an American. If they are aliens and they beget a child, the child takes on the nationality of the parents. You cannot take a shamrock and make it into a clover. So I thank you very much. Now, for, uh, Antelope Valley Press, a Glendale man was sentenced Monday to five years for $3 million in false Medicare claims. He was an Armenian national. I bring this up because I wanted to tell you, he was not on Section 8. Any questions?
No, thank you, Barbara.
Here's something for you. Those on Section 8 have a right to apply for county, since they're American citizens. And in doing so, they have a right to go to the employment office if there are any jobs. What you're saying is, I am ignoring the classified ads where there are four pages of homes that are foreclosed, and only one page that has employment opportunities.
Thank you. Jonathan Salazar?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jonathan Salazar, and with me is David Ibelito, uh, back here in the back shirt. Tonight, we ask that you help and really put your stamp of approval on a project that has been thought of for many months, and this is the following project. Each year, Young Americans Foundation helps citizens across the nation properly remember the anniversary of September 11th terrorist attacks through the 9/11 Never Forget Project. Young Americans Foundation began this program in 2003 when they found that many college campuses were either totally ignoring the event or holding a politically correct event instead. I strongly believe that we can unite our community even more to properly remember the victims of the terrorist attacks by implementing the 9/11 Never Forget Project. The purpose of this event is to remember the people who lost their lives on 9/11, to instill a sense of resolve that we will never let their death be in vain, to remember our first responders and military, and lastly, to foster a greater sense of patriotism in the citizens of Lancaster. So what part does the city play? We're asking that the city leaders present and dedicate this event as an annual, uh, memorial service, we're asking that you use this as an opportunity to promote the city and what the city is all about, as well as have city officials make remarks in the opening and closing sections of this memorial service. We're asking that you grant us a use of a city park where we can use this, uh, to hold this, uh, one-day, um, event on September 11th, of course. And lastly, we're asking that you help, um, really, uh, put us, um, with someone in contact with city staff who can help, um, coordinate needed items such as chairs, uh, sound system and such. We have made a list of potential sponsors, um, as needed. Um, if you would like to proceed, please direct the- If you would like to proceed, please direct the appropriate staff member to contact me this week to get the process underway. No matter the outcome of this meeting, starting the, we plan to start the project within the next week to week and a half, and we just think that having the city on board would really carry a lot more weight than if people see a lot more teenagers, you know, running this thing. We think that with the city's supervision and help and involvement, that this can really be one of the greatest events that Lancaster has really performed. I don't know currently if the city of Lancaster is doing anything at this point. If not, I would highly recommend that you take into consideration these ideas. And I do have handouts for each of you to please review and to please consider doing this and being involved with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green would, Mr. Green will be in touch with you?
Yes.
And any questions?
No, babe. We do have a, that the Sheriff Department, the CHP, the Forest Service, the Correctional Officers, and the Fire Services are all, get together under the Fallen Heroes thing through the Sheriff Booster. So we do do a 9/11 thing with all those different services here in the valley already, so...
Thank you.
I might...
Is it fine if I, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
I'm good.
Mayor Paris, what I might, I was going to just say the same thing. I think Bob and Jason will get with him, and there may be some cooperation between those two events, because between now and being August and September 11th, I think that's a little possibly ambitious to start it out, and maybe we work it into something with that group at the park. And I think that would be a good place to learn, too, because they do an outstanding job on that event.
Whatever we do, I want to encourage them and not, not put any obstacles, but recognize that when we do events, it's six months out, not two months out.
And I understand that, and that is why I'm coming to you this early. And I say early, I'm not planning on this project being implemented next month. I would like to see this, you know, if it could, that's great. I don't think we could get all the potential sponsors by next month and all, all the proceeds and such that we need by that time. But I think, you know, a year from now, or a year from...
That's much more doable.
Yes, sir. And that's my goal. Is it fine if I hand these out to you? Basically, facts and overview.
I just did want to say, one thing is, is it seems like there was something that came across my calendar for 9/11. And I did email and ask if we had anything specifically to, to remember 9/11 about, and I haven't followed up with the email, and I did not get an answer on that.
I think that was probably because I was supposed to answer that one, but we were going to talk about the event that Marv was doing. I think the idea being the 10th, I believe it's the 10th anniversary next year, is a great event to start working on now, and we'd be happy to work at the council's direction with the...
I'd be glad to invite him to our group, so we could have one representative. And if you'll wait around, I'll get your information.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I want to say that Pepperdine actually puts on a 9/11 memorial, and they have like, I think it's 3,000 American flags that they put out on their lawn, and they're preparing to do that again this year. It's pretty, it's pretty amazing outside.
Right, and, and what I wanted to do with the, of course, the support of the city, is what you're referring to is the 2,977 flags that represent the lives lost. What they are is, you can get the size of the flags however you want. Most college campuses right now, and actually a city in North Carolina, they have flags where they're noticeable, but where you stick them in the ground, and where people driving by or people walking can see them, and it's noticeable.
I actually just saw the pictures today from last year's ceremony at Pepperdine, and it's, it is quite amazing. It's very moving. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Andrew Nieto?
I never thought I'd be in the position of raising a podium, I'm usually too short. Anyway, my name is pronounced Nieto, it's Spanish. Well, I was a little surprised when MB1 was taken off, so like you guys suggested, I put in a speaker card for the non-agenda. As I read here, it's about, the city's concern is about the possible impact of this power plant being pursued by the city of Palmdale. It's, excuse me, potential impact on Lancaster. And specifically steps that the city can pursue in the intervention if that is what they associate to do. So, as I'm thinking about it, when I first heard about the power plant and that it would be located on the corner of Sierra Highway and Avenue M, my immediate thought was, well, my goodness, that's one of the best views in the valley right there. I've taken pictures from that spot many times, and I've seen pictures from that spot appear in the Antelope Valley Press. And also, that area, when you consider the size of the power plant and the parking lot, is one of the thickest Joshua Tree stands that I know of anywhere in this valley. Plant 42 has done a wonderful job of preserving Joshua Trees. And so, I'm thinking, personally, I don't have enough information, and I don't actually have an opinion on whether Palmdale should build this power plant, but those are two thoughts that immediately come to mind. I would think that Lancaster might have a role in the environmental impact report, because in terms of power, this is the city of Palmdale. It's, it's basically a sovereign affair. So the only two areas that I can think of where the city could really get involved, number one, if there's any kind of, again, I don't know the technicalities of it, but what kind of cooperation does Palmdale have with Plant 42 and the Air Force that Lancaster might also be a part of? In other words, the regional, the regional political impact of Plant 42 and the Air Force, in terms of Lancaster's involvement in that. And also, the environmental impact report. Naturally, that would be a place the city could get involved, because clearly, if it's a natural gas plant, it's going to affect Lancaster. In terms of whether it should be built, again, I don't have enough information yet, I don't have an opinion on that. So based on the paragraph that is here in the agenda that was removed, that's the best thing that I can think of to speak on is those two areas in which Lancaster could potentially get involved is in the regional political cooperation of Plant 42 and the environmental impact report.
Thank you. David Evers?
Good evening, Council, staff, and citizens. I also came to speak on MB1. I've got a lot of concerns with Ms. Marquez and Mr. Smith, who's not here to defend himself. I'm curious to why it got so far down the road before Mr. Chris, who got appointed to the AQMD Commission, was able to step in. This is an issue that Mr. Talbot brought to your attention, Mr. Mayor, a long time ago, good seven months ago. And I question why the people that were on the committees were asleep at the wheel, for lack of a better term, but I'm not going to waste my time with that, because it'll come up again, hopefully, and maybe they can explain why Mr. Smith isn't here, so he can't explain, and the other council person is still on the thing can. Having said that, I raised a question the other day, whether Mr. McKeon gets a salary or not, and I was told that he doesn't. I know the last time I researched this a few years ago, when we had a different mayor, he did get a salary, and maybe we can clear that up. I'm very concerned about $11 million lawsuit that just got filed last week. And what we're going to do as a city to, we've got many lawsuits running over the top of us, you know, the Allied Arts and so forth and so on. These things concern me greatly about the future of the city with these type things Changing gears a little bit, I can recall being at these meetings before when a young lady by the name of Heather Thomas came here, and she had concerns with some of the behavior of the Sheriff's Department. Mr. Bozigan was very concerned and wanted it looked into. Well, I've got similar concerns. There was a groundbreaking on March 26th that I was removed from. As a result, on May 18th, the exact officers that removed me, which would be Enselmo Gonzalez and Claudia Riesling, they showed up at my house on March 18th, followed me out of my driveway, and proceeded to harass me. I think this is a very serious situation that needs to be addressed immediately with respect to, I filed a complaint dated April 13th on this very matter, and before that investigation was completed, the very people that were being investigated were retaliating or appeared to, when they came right into my neighborhood and pulled over a vehicle when I was headed to a softball team. So these are things we need to take a look at, because it's, it's very alarming to me as a citizen. With respect to the Section 8 issue, you don't seem to have any respect for any civil rights in town, so why don't you just go ahead and jump right in headlong into the Section 8 and run everybody out of town and get Section 8? Thank you.
Council agency comments? Anything? Lancaster Financing Authority, no action at this time. Will now recess to close session for the following matters. Do I got to list them? Am I supposed to list them, David?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what?
They're on the agenda, so they don't need to be separate.
I'm sorry, I forgot my mic as well. They're separately stated on the agenda, and those are the three items we're going into close session on. I don't think we need to make any further announcements.
Okay.
We will be making an announcement of action taken.
Thank you for coming. Let's reconvene. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the council met under Government Code Section 5495-6.9A concerning the Mongols' lawsuit against the city, gave direction to the city attorney concerning that lawsuit. They also met under Government Code Section 5495-6.8 concerning real property negotiations for the property of 548 West Avenue I, gave direction to Executive Director concerning those negotiations. And also, under Government Code Section 5495-6.8 with respect to the property in the Lancaster Auto Mall, and gave direction to the Executive Director concerning those negotiations. There's no other reportable action taken.
Thank you. We will adjourn the meeting this evening in memory of Michael McNeil, who passed away on July 13th, 2010. Mr. McNeil was in LA County Deputy Sheriff for 17 years, served on the Partners Against Crime Unit. He was a code enforcement supervisor for the city of Palmdale for 12 years, and had just recently retired. He is survived by his wife Linda McNeil, who was an employee with the city of Lancaster, two daughters, one granddaughter, and one grandchild on the way. We will be giving them a certificate of this adjournment. We are adjourned until Tuesday, August 10th, 2010, at 5:00 PM. Thank you.